Good afternoon. It's 2:31. Today is Tuesday, the 1st of December 2020. I'll call Lubbock City Council to order. We are in work session this afternoon in advance of our regularly scheduled first meeting of December, which will begin this afternoon later. We have all seven members of the council with us via video conference today. We're also joined by the city manager, as always, and by Mr. Blue Costelich, who will be participating in work session also. Other members of senior staff are with us, including the city secretary's office, Ms. Garza and Ms. Paz, as well as the deputy city attorney, Mr. Satterwhite, who will be standing in for Mr. Mayor today. We have two items in our work session today. We first will hear an update on our legislative agenda, and following that, we will get an update from finance from Mr. Costelich regarding some of the debt issuances that we have approved with the parameters for over the last, I guess, 60 days or so, and those bonds have now been sold. And Mr. Costelich is going to bring us a report back on that, as well as a monthly sales tax receipt. I think it's information we've seen, but we've not had a chance to have that discussion around that. So he'll be offering that to us this afternoon also. So before, however, we go to work session, we do have citizen comments posted, and that would be anybody that would like to comment on item 2-1. Counsel, as you know, we're going to work, we'll talk about 2-1 and work session, and then it's the final item on our regular agenda tonight. It's posted to a resolution adopting it is posted on that agenda. So I'll go to Ms. Garza. Becky, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, that's a, thank you, Ms. Garza. That's in case you couldn't hear that. That was no, there are no, no one has signed up for citizen comments. But that being the case, we'll move on to item 2. The first item there is 2-1. It's that legislative agenda that I mentioned earlier. You'll recall that, counsel, that on November 12th, I believe, at our planning meeting, we first looked at this. We provided some feedback to Mr. Atkinson. We had Ms. Joy spent a bit of time, not only catching us up to date on work from the Texas Municipal League, which she serves on their legislative committee, as well as represents us on the board. We did, I guess that's the only time we've talked about it. Originally, we were going to have it on our agenda. I can't recall. Anyway, is that right?
Yeah, we were on the 16th, yes.
Yeah, we chose to push it to this meeting. So we've had, you've had a chance to review it, you've had a chance to offer comments to staff. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Atkinson. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, give me just a moment. I'm going to flip the screen real quick.
While he's doing that, counsel, you also were provided a copy of this today via email, if you'd prefer to look at it like that, if you have a separate screen.
Okay, thank you. We should have the presentation up if someone would confirm that for me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor and City Council, you do have this, this document was provided to you a little bit earlier today, provided to you in the form that would attach to the resolution, should you approve this or something similar to that. The presentation is directly taken from that letter form that you received earlier and just put in a more suitable fashion to walk through. So with that, we'll begin. This is your legislative package or agenda. Counsel would remind that this applies both to the Texas Legislature, which is the 87th session, and to the next session of the United States Congress, which would be the 117th Congress. Jumping in now, and this should look like the documents you have in your hands. We have a background statement. This statement, counsel, has been consistent for at least your last three legislative sessions. So this is to communicate with state and federal representatives. Tracking legislative issues are important to ensure the council has a strong voice in legislation and rulemaking that impacts city governance and operations. We've changed the form just slightly, so you're still on your first page. We've added a statement of intent. That statement reads, "The Lubbock City Council supports active participation and partnerships in the legislative process. The City Council believes that local control is necessary and provides the ability to govern in an effective and efficient manner." So Mayor, if you, do you want me to stop there? That's a new one, or do we want to wait till the end?
I think we'll let you run through it. Just, I should have done a little bit of housekeeping. I'm going to ask everyone to mute, and then when you want to speak, to come off mute and to get my attention, please. That way, I think we'll have the very smallest amount of background noise. If there's not anyone that has a comment on this first page, I'll ask you to continue. Please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. So moving accordingly, "The City Council affirms to all necessary persons and parties the following positions that will be based on these principles. Number one, the city will work to pass its priority legislation. Number two, the city will oppose any legislation that would erode the governing authority of the duly-elected Lubbock City Council. Number three, the city will monitor proposed legislation and take appropriate action to assure the city is able to meet its obligations under the city charter, applicable law, and to provide local services as approved by the city council." Those three statements have been in your prior agendas, as has the first one on this screen, so we're on number four. "The city will oppose the imposition of any state mandates that do not provide for a commensurate level of compensation." You'll see this in greater detail as we jump into the direct points. This is commonly the language regarding unfunded mandates, and again, consistent with your prior efforts. This last listed bullet is a new statement. "The city will work with appropriate associations and peer cities to support legislative items that are consistent with the statement and principles contained within these priorities and to oppose those that are not." So again, that is a new statement added to your agenda for this year. And I've had a slide that disappeared. So let me read to you, counsel. You're still on page 1.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Joy.
That last addition that he made, I just wanted to know what's the purpose of adding that language? What does it do for us?
Thank you. I'll speak to that. I think this does for us several things. Number one, it makes very clear what I believe has historically been implied. That is that there are various associations. A common one would be the Texas Municipal League. It's one we commonly think of. There are numerous others. The Texas Police Chiefs Associations, Building Officials Association of Texas, Planning Officials in Texas. There are many associations that at times will have positions that are consistent with those that would be adopted by this city council. And the same would apply to peer cities, cities generally of similar size to ours throughout the state. Recognizing the speed and the complexity of the legislative action. In fact, we ended last night with 846 bills already filed. We expect there to be well over 7,500. This just makes it plain that if those other associations or those other cities are also conducting legislative activities and they align with Lubbock's, that we can work with them and add our voice to that, or as appropriate, add their voice to ours.
All right, please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay. And counsel, again, I think I've dropped a slide, so I'm going to redirect off the bottom of page 1. There's one very important item we need to have on the table. That statement reads, "The City Council recognizes the speed with which the legislative process moves. In order to respond in a timely manner to issues that would fall outside the council's approved principles, the mayor will consult with two council members to direct legislative efforts through the city manager and city attorney offices." This is a statement that was in your most recent legislative agenda. Counsel may recall that an item came up, an opportunity to clarify some language that was in regards to your municipal court. This was the mechanism by which we were able to get to that and keep it moving within the legislative session. So I'm going to now begin the direct discussion. So we'll start on page 2 of your attachment. The first references those items that the city will initiate. So in this case, we would work with draft legislation, and then we would meet with our delegation and seek a sponsor if ultimately the city adopts this. So we are asking for efforts to allow the city to adopt the vacant building and minimum maintenance standards authority that is allowed to other municipalities. Counsel, this has been discussed several times. It's a direct recommendation specifically from your newly adopted downtown master plan. As you may remember, the authority to do this today is limited by population. And I believe the population minimum bracket is a county of 2 million people or more, so obviously Lubbock falls outside of that. If you choose to adopt this, and we are able to seek and receive a sponsor and move it through the process, what you would be doing is opening the window to allow this. Having the legislation to allow it does not have the effect of adopting it locally. That is still a separate action that this council would have to consider at the appropriate time. Lots of questions on that?
Looks like Mr. Choddis is teed up here. One?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Talk to me about adopting vacant building and minimum maintenance. What are we looking at, Jared? Specifically, the buildings that are downtown that are boarded up? Where are we headed with this?
Yeah, so counsel, one good question. Recall the examples that were discussed when we had this in front of the council during your downtown master plan were really those from San Antonio. We believe they were the first, or at least the city that moved the quickest. This is really an effort for the downtown area for a vacant building to require certain minimum maintenance. This is mainly going to be on the building face, the part that fronts towards the street, although it could be in greater detail than that. Various options include things like lighting. Options would include things such as not having boarded over openings, be those doors or windows, but rather have something that is a, it's a building face that matches, or at least, you know, similar quality to what's around it.
Thank you. That's what I, that's what I would envision just by definition that I'm looking at right here. No reason why we should have buildings on, well, really, on the downtown area that are boarded up for an indefinite amount of time. I've been in town for nine years, and I've been looking at the same storefronts, or I'm sorry, the building fronts boarded up. And it's after nine years, it's definitely an indefinite amount of time. Thank you for the definition. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Choddis. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, Mr. Manager, City Manager, I have a question. Will there be any restrictions as a part of this potential legislation that restricts it only to downtown areas? Is it something that we can utilize to other parts of the city? Is there anything that prevents that from happening?
I think the decision, if the city is allowed to adopt these standards, I think then the decision as to where to apply those standards is up to the city council.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson, why don't you continue, please?
Yes, sir. So we're going to move into those general items for which we suggest the city stand in support. The first, designation of Interstate 27 North and South from its current limits. This, of course, is the outshoot of the efforts that began after the 2019, the 86th legislative session, work that many of y'all, and certainly Mayor Pope, have participated in. Report was delivered to the Texas Transportation Commission. Actually, that report was delivered on the day we did our council planning session. And it does support the need to extend I-27 North and South from its current limits. And, you know, really, this is to enhance safety. It's to enhance passenger and freight mobility, and it's to support international trade through Texas. We really only have one major north-south interstate across the state of Texas. It's time to have a second one. I think that program was well done. That legislation, Chairman Perry, was well-written, and I think the process worked, and it worked well. This is the council's opportunity then, should you choose, to support those efforts as they move through the legislative session here locally in Texas, and you will also see it in your federal list. The next point is, of course, directly related, and that is supporting funding to appropriate capital to construct I-27 from its current limits to interstate highway standards. So step one is the designation. Step two is if they're going to make that designation, and it will need to be made both at the federal and the state level, then it's time to start appropriating dollars. This is a decades-long process, but it's waited for decades. It's time to take a move, and staff is suggesting that you provide your support specifically to those two items. The third, ensure that long-term funding for the remaining development and construction of Loop 88 is made available. Certainly, we know the first segments are funded, that generally being the south-south central pieces of the Loop 88. This is also a long-running project. It has a long way to go to get around. We want to see the state continue their funding, and certainly the federal dollars as appropriate. The next item, support Lubbock Power and Lights' transition into ERCOT, or the Electric Reliability Council of Texas, and ultimately entrance into the competitive retail market, or what we call choice for electric customers. The next one is a direct follow-up to a bill that was put through during your last session. This one by Chairman Burrows, sometimes called the Wayfair Bill. This speaks to how online sales tax revenue that is collected by the state on behalf of local government is ultimately distributed. This is a bill that's made potentially available to the city online sales tax revenues that were not available previously. As the controller went through the process to put rules in place, it kind of got stalled a little bit over the discussion of does the sales tax go to origination or to destination? But then it also got stalled by the COVID pandemic. We expect this will come back up to the state legislature. Your staff suggests that the council add its support to distributing these online sales tax revenues to the point of destination. This is a, we think this is a big deal.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Joy, I'm sorry, couldn't get to the button. Yes, Latrell?
Okay, in connection with that legislation, there was also a limit on the amount of income received from a business, and they were excluded. Do you recall that? I don't know why we would limit that for any reason. If they are doing sales in our city, regardless of the amount of income they generate, I would think that we would want that restriction removed. Thoughts?
So the piece of the legislation that I believe you're referring to was the, the quote, "minimum sales threshold," basically. And this speaks to the marketplace piece of the bill. And that was that sellers, and these primarily would be sellers, to my understanding, that are not here, and possibly not even in Texas, that go through a small marketplace, and if that seller's total sales were below a certain threshold, and for some reason, $500,000 sticks in my head, but I doubt that's correct. And Mr. Costelich may be able to pull that and interject for us here in a minute.
I believe that's the number, Mr. Atkinson. That, I'm fairly certain that's the number.
Right. So am I hearing a suggestion then that we support efforts to remove that minimum sales threshold?
Yes, because those businesses are competing with our local businesses who do pay sales tax, our small businesses, all of them pay. But they are definitely competing with our local small businesses. So I would like to see that added.
Mayor, counsel, other thoughts?
Any other, any thoughts? Let's just do it like this. Anybody have a contrary opinion to that? Okay, Mr. Atkinson, could you work with Mr. Satterwhite and maybe add a sentence to that, so we could consider that this evening, please?
Yes, sir. We could, we'll have that ready for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, please continue.
We'll go to the next. This has been a longstanding item in your legislative agendas each year, and that is support changes to Chapter 143, Texas Local Government Code, that enhance both the police and the fire chief's authority as it relates to personnel matters. There are some potential bills that are floating around out there. We don't have one to suggest we attach to at this moment, but I certainly expect that they will be coming. The next one is new. This is to support efforts to have a clearer definitions regarding deliberation and consideration, and those are specific terms that were created in light of changes in the Texas Open Meetings Act from the last session. And this was specifically House Bill 2840 and Senate Bill 1640. So we're asking for that. I do know that there are some associations interested in getting some clear definitions, and this is really an opportunity, or it's an ask, to make it easy for the governing bodies to be sure they're playing by the rules. The next item, this one is new. This is to ask for the inclusion of larger municipal fire departments in matters that come before the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. So the Texas Commission on Fire Protection is, has just completed its sunset review, and there will be many changes or suggestions that come out of that sunset review. Part of them do speak to ensuring that TCFP is fully representative, to the extent possible, from your smallest volunteer unit up to your largest full-time municipal fire department. Our own fire chief is working with a group of chiefs from the larger cities. I expect that that group will come up with some specific language. Counsel, if you accept the language that's on this page, that will allow us to work through that. This is really the group that makes rules, that makes regulations on how we run our fire departments, right down to the types of personal protective equipment that we buy. And I think there's an opportunity for the larger departments to participate in those matters and be sure that we're all getting what we really need and that we're doing so without an excess regulatory burden. And in this case, burden is not safety, never is. Burden could be cost that possibly wasn't totally necessary. The next item, we want to ensure that qualifying convention hotel projects, that's a term of art, that have been delayed by the COVID-19 pandemic, can be completed at the proper time and still with those state rebates. We're still internally working on the most specifics of that. It is likely that our project is in one of the brackets that's not affected. We just want to be extremely certain that that is the case. The next one, this one is new this year. We would ask the council to support efforts that require marketplace providers or facilitators of short-term rentals to remit the local hot tax directly to the appropriate municipality. So counsel, some of you may recall many, many years ago, when we had all the online travel sites, there was a big dispute that ultimately ended up in a very long-running court case about how the local and the state hot taxes were remitted when those online booking places were in a completely different state than where they were going. As we know here, this council has put in place really a registration process for short-term rentals in your community, so relatively minimal regulation compared to what you see in many cities. But today, the burden to pay that local hotel occupancy tax is on each individual owner, excuse me, of that short-term rental. We do know that some marketplace providers are paying the local hot on behalf of their providers directly to cities. Yet, we've had a hard time getting that to work. We were very close with the largest provider, and here, three weeks ago, they said, hey, you know what? There's a pandemic on. We're going to cease negotiations with you. There were certain members, advisory people, that spoke to the council when you were looking at that registration that were very strong. This should be sent directly by these platforms, and we're asking counsel to get behind that, and let's push it through the legislature if the opportunity arises. Next item, this one has been on your prior agendas. Improve vehicular and pedestrian safety along Avenue Q or Highway 84 within the city limits. You know, we continue to work with TechDOT. We really look forward to seeing some positive changes on that. The next item has been on your prior agendas to some extent. We've kind of expanded it a little bit. This is efforts to ensure that cities can appropriately manage all utility installations within city right-of-way and to provide for market-based rates. Counsel knows two sessions ago, there were some changes that really kind of turned the market-based concept a little bit over on its side. And then, of course, in the prior session, there were some telecom franchise deals. They're not strictly right-of-way, the way we're referring to it here, but they also had a, had a negative effect. So we're just saying, all utilities and treat them the same. That's what that statement means. The next item, expect to see this as a major topic when the legislature convenes, and that's the expansion of broadband availability throughout Texas. Certainly, it's been on many people's radar for years. I think the pandemic has really, really heightened the awareness of that. There are some national-level groups working on it. We will watch that, keep counsel informed as it moves forward, but this is good. We want, we want to see this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Joy.
On this item, it is also high on the TML legislative program, but the concern, I think, that the cities have is who's going to pay for it? You know, it's one of those ideas. You know, it's one of those ideas broadband, which is great, it needs to happen, but I think we need to be sure that if we're going to support that, that it be with the understanding that, that the state pick up the expense and that they've not put that over onto the cities, which would not surprise me in the least for that to happen.
So, I think that's a
Good point.
Excellent point, and I may have that, uh, covered when we get to the next section. If not, and if counsel would prefer, we can come back and expand this particular point and make that plain.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson, please continue.
Okay, this will complete, uh, the list of items we recommend support. Of course, funding for Texas Tech University, the Veterinary School, the Mental Health Institute. Full funding for the Texas Recreation and Parks Account Local Grant Program. Counsel, we've had, uh, significant discussion on the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants. This particular program was originally intended to be funded where they set aside from the sales tax collected on sporting goods. Of course, as we have come out of, uh, many of the darker parts of the pandemic, sporting goods sales are really doing very, very well as an industry. Um, we would like to be sure that that funding that was intended to go to TRPA does go to TRPA. Counsel, this is also directly related to the city's effort to do the new Parks Master Plan, which of course is one of the key criteria in being able to access those various grant programs. And Mr. Van Gundy talked to us all about that at your planning meeting. The next one, um, full funding, full state funding for mental health treatment. Um, that's been on prior agendas, as has the next one. Creation and funding of state programs to address chronic homelessness. Of course, the state did add dollars um, to the mental health programs at large in the last session. Um, it was a big step forward. Uh, it doesn't get us to the finish line, and we hope that the state will continue to do that. The final one, this is new. Um, this would be efforts to add municipal parks as an eligible use for hotel occupancy tax funding, but we have added a qualifier that if that is done, it should always be subject to local approval. There are certain cities and communities. Think of any of your, uh, your prime visitor spots, your tourism locations. Um, this is really the group that's gonna push this item forward. Having it as a tool in the potential toolbox, I think, would be a good thing, but not if it's a mandatory spend. That spend should be always subject to the city council. Mayor, with that, that completes the items, um, for which we recommend support. Um, I do have a couple of notes. Um, one is to go back and talk about removing that minimum threshold on the marketplace sellers. And the second is a reminder to come back on broadband um, and qualify that that's not at city expense. And with that, uh, I would stop. Take any comments before we move to the next section.
Thanks, Mr. Atkinson. Uh, counsel, comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Joy, Mr. Chalis after that. Go ahead, Latrell.
There's an, uh, um, there are some bills out there in, that, um, mandate certain police uh, functions, uh, how they operate, their equipment, all of that. And I don't know, uh, Mr. Um, Atkinson, if you're going to cover that over in your opposition uh, portion. Um, but there's been a lot of discussion about those bills. And I think as a counsel, we need to take a position on that issue. For me, it's an issue of local control, and that's included in your opposition. But I think we need a more specific reference, and it doesn't matter where we put it, whether it goes into, you know, we will, uh, work in favor of or oppose, but it, it's a specific issue. If you're reading those bills that are, that are already filed, you, you should be a little nervous about it. So, that's my comment.
So, duly noted, and I, I do not have a specific call-out. I believe the topic is generally referred to as police reform.
Yes.
As the council member has noted, the ones that are out there today are pretty wide-ranging. Um, some of them on their face, um, appear to be very logical to make good sense. Um, some of them, uh, maybe not quite so much. So, if we could, I've, I've made a note of that. Let's, uh, let me work on that in my head as we get through the end. I think it really needs to be supporting something, you know, some type of, uh, you know, police reform that's subject to the local control and approval. So, can we hold that for a moment, or if anybody else has thoughts, I'd love to have them.
I, I, I just have o- one comment. Uh, when we discussed that at the legislative meeting, there was, um, from all of the cities, uh, there was overwhelming support that we keep that in the local arena as opposed to some sort of, um, mandate that every city do the exact same things. And then there was also the issue of uh, who pays for what if you do mandate, but that's covered over in your, uh, your opposition language.
Yes, and, uh, of course, Chief Mitchell is, uh, very involved with the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and they're reviewing and analyzing, um, this same topic as it moves forward. Uh, council members, any other thoughts before we move?
I think Mr. Chalis had, had a question or comment. Mr. Chalis?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Atkinson, uh, that was, I think, as a previous slide, you made reference to Avenue Q, otherwise known as, I'm sorry, Highway 84, otherwise known as Avenue Q. Improving pedestrian and vehicular safety. Now, for public information, Highway 84 or Avenue Q, DOT owns, owns that, right?
That is correct.
How does that work?
You're correct. That is a, that is a highway. Um, thus, it is under control and jurisdiction of the Texas Department of Transportation. Uh, I think all of us are aware, especially as it relates to pedestrian safety, um, there have been fatal accidents up and down the stretch, um, that's within the city limits, and we're talking, you know, primarily from 34th, um, north, although within the last 24 months, there was one just south of the intersection at 50th Street. There are a couple of installations of what are called the HAWKS, which are the pedestrian crossing signals that set off the flashing red, solid red light, um, to try to allow that. But Avenue Q has relatively high-speed limits. Um, as you get to 19th and you go north, um, you have numerous, uh, cross streets, numerous traffic signals, numerous driveways. Um, we just think there's a better way, you know, to do that. I think the ultimate game um, would possibly be that it, it becomes off-system, um, and done, and done in cooperation with TechDOT. It moves over to city, but I think we're quite a ways away, at least, uh, financially, from making that happen right now.
Okay, so currently as it stands, in order for us to do any improvements, now, do we need DOT permit, or does DOT work on our recommendations at their cost? How does that work?
Uh, it can be done both, but, you know, any changes, any modifications, uh, even basic maintenance, um, to, to Avenue Q, I'll just call it that. Um, those are subject to DOT, uh, Texas Department of Transportation. Um, we do have a cooperative agreement with them on the traffic signals and the HAWK devices. Um, but that's really it. The street lighting project that you may recall from just a little over a year ago, uh, that was entirely a TechDOT project. There was a seal coat done on the segment from 19th to Marcia Sharp. That was a TechDOT project. Would note that your local district office, um, has been working with us to try to find ways to, to really change that and make it better, but again, we're not within our fiscal limits, and I don't believe that TechDOT is either to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I just want to share some information with the public. It's not as simple as we decide we're gonna do something on Avenue Q.
You are correct.
Okay, good information. Thank you for sharing with the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chalis. Okay, Mr. Atkins, please continue.
Hey, thank you. Let's, uh, let's kind of move into the next segment. Um, this segment's a little bit shorter, thankfully. Uh, I want to talk, uh, first. This is an entirely new point. Um, it is limits. We will oppose limits on effective municipal participation in the legislative process and the ability to hire representatives with public funds to represent the city in accordance with this duly adopted agenda on matters that impact the city or our residents. Uh, allow me to give a little background. Um, most of this, counsel, you're well aware of. Um, number one, from Citizens Tower to the corner of Congress Avenue in front of the Texas State Capitol, it's 373 miles um, with nothing in the way. That's five hours and 52 minutes by car, uh, at least according to the Google Map program. And unfortunately, um, based on common airline schedules, you're about the same minimum time away by airplane. I say that to highlight this. Um, last session, there were over 7,500 bills that were filed in the Texas Legislature. Approximately 2,000 of those bills, in one manner or another, were city-related. Um, many of those not what are the common hot topics, such as tax reform and, and items like that. But they, they really are, are bills that affect the normal operations of a city, how you run a water system, how you run a wastewater system, what you can and cannot do in parks, liability associated with parks, with police, with fire. Workers' compensation to protect our first responders. Things as simple as plating of land. Um, certainly, we're all aware of the annexation fights that went on. That's past us. But I, I highlight this to say Texas Legislature meets for 140 days. Uh, and that group of women and men have a tremendous task in front of them, and they're there. We're not. We're not. And every day, bills are filed that could have an effect on us, um, have an effect on our rates, our water rates, you know, whatever, whatever we may be doing. Having the ability to be able to effectively participate, um, we would suggest is a fundamental right of cities. Attempting to do that from this distance and this time away from the Capitol is impractical. Just as cities, counties, even the state government, we all hire experts to help us in, in many different manners of the business that we conduct. We think it's very important that we be able to do that to help us participate in the legislative process. So, we are talking about lobbyists. Um, we know that taxpayer-funded lobbying, or anti-taxpayer-funded lobbying is the common term. Um, that will be a major topic. Um, there's already a Senate committee that will be meeting on December the 10th. They were gonna meet in November, and they postponed till September, till December. I said the 10th. I believe it's actually the 7th. Um, and it's starting on that. For the city not to have access to professionals to help us do this, I think long-term has a very negative effect on our ability to participate in the process, and that's all we're, we're suggesting with this item. Mayor, that's a, a new one and a pretty big one. Do you want me to stop on it before I keep moving?
Yeah, I'd like you to, to, um, to sort of maybe for the council, do a little what-if. Um, so if, if if legislation like this were to be passed, how would we, um, protect the interest of our citizens as going forward? How, what, what would this, um, uh, potentially require future, a future council to do, Mr. Atkinson?
That's a, that's excellent point, Mayor. So, I'm gonna pull up a separate document while we talk, but without the ability to hire, uh, a firm that is in Austin, it would require the city of Lubbock to hire staff, um, and I'm going on the language that was in one of the bills that did not go through during the last session. It would require us to hire staff, and for all practical purposes, to place them in Austin, um, at, at least during the weekdays, early on in the session, uh, and likely seven days a week later in the session. Your current lobby contract, um, is $138,000 a year total. For that, we get an entire firm that's located just a few blocks from the Capitol, has multiple professionals that are able to do bill tracking, that are able to provide us notice of hearings, able to assist, um, myself or my staff if we are called to testify, or if we need to go to testify. They provide that same service to the city council. To do that without that help, um, would result, at my best guess, in needing a minimum of two employees. Very significant travel expense, um, very significant lodging expense, um, to keep them there as the process goes forward. Something that sometimes, um, maybe doesn't get noticed as well, is the session moves towards the end, and, and again, your, your legislators are working on a just a tremendous, tremendous number of bills. Hearings, matters read on the floor, referred to committee, matters heard in committee, moved back into the calendars group, scheduled for a second, a third read. Often at the end of the session, um, the legislature has need to call various hearings, um, to cure a matter, to go back and address an item, maybe that wasn't previously addressed. And that happens by necessity at very, very short notice, very short notice. Um, without having access to people working on our behalf that are there, and we would have to provide that on our own. And then the further question to me is I look at a financial impact, um, if we had to pick this effort up with city staff. The legislature only meets every two years. And granted, there's a lot of interim work that goes on. There are interim committees, but not at the intensity, not at the speed, and often not always in Austin that occurs during that interim. So, we're, we're gonna have relatively expensive personnel that are gonna have one portion of their job extremely intense, and the rest of it maybe much less. Now, granted, we can find other items at which those folks could assist us with. But to be effective at the legislature requires a lot of knowledge, requires a lot of access, requires an ability to know which committee's gonna hear which bill, and which way you need to work on that. So, the short version, Mayor, I think it would cost us substantially more than what we pay today. And I think at least at the onset of such a shift, the ability to be effective would probably be reduced.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, I don't hear any, uh,
Yeah, let's continue. Let's go ahead and continue, please.
Um, the next one, um, new limits.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, I can get you. Mr. Chris, go ahead, Mr. Christian. I'm sorry.
I'm trying, well, I apologize. I'm having to do a little workaround on my mute and unmute, so, uh, but anyway, I, I just wanted to comment on this, and after, uh, uh, Mr. Atkinson had, uh, gone over some of the uh, potholes that we might face if this sort of legislation is, is passed. And, and I think that it is, for, for any, in my opinion, any legislative representative who supports this does not have the best interests of Lubbock and its citizens. Let me make that statement right up front. Also, I think that, that we, so all cities, whether it's Lubbock or others, should have the complete authority over how we want our representation to take place during the legislative session in regards to people being able to attend meetings for us and provide information to us, uh, as Mr. Atkinson has alluded to, uh, a few moments ago. Uh, I think that this is, this is vitally important uh, for us, for all the reasons Mr. Atkinson said, but I think it's incumbent on us as a council and staff to make sure that we are very intentionally and very strongly getting the message out to our constituents of why this is important. So many times, this sort of thing is twisted in ways that makes So many times, this sort of thing is twisted in ways that makes uh our council and our staff um not in the best of light. And it's back to what I've said a number of times. We either communicate um by default and we don't want to communicate by default. Uh, we want to make sure that we're in control of the message, and I think it's very, very important for us to maybe even put together a plan of how we communicate this uh to the to the citizens of Lubbock, Texas. This is very, very, very important. And uh, I'll now uh be asked to be muted. Uh, uh, and I'll uh pass the ball on to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Mr. Mayor, I found my mute button. Uh, I I tell you what concerns me about this uh attempt to to limit the use of public funds. Would they also try to say that we could not hire staff, our own staff to do that because they're being paid with public funds?
Council member, I can only go back um to the bill that was presented uh in the eighty-six session. Um, it did not. And that that was, if if we're talking strictly dollars and cents, that was the interesting thing. It would not prevent a staff member, um, an elected official uh from doing this. It 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 was focused on at the moment taxpayer dollars. Now, that can be defined in a lot of different ways, but taxpayer funds to hire a third party to do it. Um, and it also had language that would have would have uh uh, in my opinion, it would have would have impacted associations. And again, the Texas Municipal League or in the county world, the Texas Association of Counties gains all the attention. But there that those are far from the only associations um that our professionals work with that really are the subject matter experts in their particular field. Mentioned one earlier, Building Official Association of Texas, uh, Texas Police Chief Association. Those all have a due, a member due that we pay uh to participate and to gain access to their knowledge.
Are we members of the Texas Business Association?
No, but the Lubbock Chamber is um a Texas Association. You're talking about Texas Association of Business?
Tab.
Yeah, tab. Yeah, Chamber's a very active member, yes. I guess many of us as Chamber members or a number of us as Chamber members are in some ways members of it, yes, through our businesses.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you. I do have a question. Uh, Mr. Atkinson, does the state of Texas utilize representatives or lobbyists in Washington, DC at the federal level?
I I do not know the answer to that.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think the other thing, we we could go into this a lot, but the legislation that was proposed in the eighty-sixth uh session um was targeted at uh cities and counties. Uh, it had, um, Mr. Atkinson, correct me where I'm wrong, but it it had uh colored out school districts, hospital districts, water districts, higher education, community colleges, um, among others. Uh, it was, the language was written pretty much right at cities and counties.
Yes, sir.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. Next item, um, oppose new limits on city fiscal authority, including additional appraisal or revenue caps or lowered rollback requirements. So, counsel, you just completed and adopted your first budget, um, that was under the rules established by Senate Bill Two, the property tax reform bill from last time. Key features of that really were lowering the rollback threshold from the eight percent, same revenue, same properties, down to three and a half percent. And second, it also made the rollback election not subject to petition but automatic if you went more than the three and a half percent, same property, same revenue. Um, we did that during a a pretty rough time this year. Of course, we came in well underneath that bill. Um, so cities, counties, and others have had exactly one session underneath that. Um, we think we can live with that and make it work. It's tight, but we can do it. Doing anything additional, I I I think would create quite a bit of unintended consequence. So we're asking for you to consider that statement there. Directly related would be new limits on the use or calculations involving the issuance of certificates of obligation. This was an item that was brought up late um in the SB two HB two discussions uh at the committee level. Um, ultimately, um, that did not end up going in. Um, but I would not be surprised to see at least discussion of that come back forward again. What what we have works and it's transparent and it's responsible. Um, of course, any debt issuance issued by the city, be it a certificate of obligation, a bond, whatever, those are all subject to approval through the Texas AG's office as well as numerous notice requirements and other items. So the the system works, and if there is abuse in the system, there already exists an incredible body of law that can be used to address those abuses. So we're asking that that stay the way it is.
Mr. Atkinson, if you would try to, let's try to uh pick up tempo just a here, if you would, just a mere time. Okay, thank you.
So we're we're just about to the end. Um, these are your more general statements. We oppose limits on home rule or local control. Limits on the municipal authority that's commonly called preemption or super-preemption bills. We do expect to see those back again. Oppose increased pass-through or regulatory fees collected for or on behalf of the state. Common example, there's your municipal court. The most significant part of a court fine um that's assessed by your local municipal court is actually payable to the state, and that's a first dollar to the state. Oppose removing the city's original jurisdiction and utility rate-making proceedings or the ability to recover those expenses. Counsel, you're working through two of those right now, um, with two providers of natural gas. We like the state and regional water planning and state and regional flood planning processes. Let's let those work. Of course, the flood planning process is new. Also championed by our local Senator Charles Perry. Um, those are good programs. Keep them going. We would oppose a reduction or limits on the event trust fund program. Um, Lubbock is able to take advantage of that for smaller events, but it provides funding back to us that can be reinvested back into events at your local level. I'll jump into your federal list, and this will be the final slide. Um, at the congressional level, we would support always additional funding for mass transportation and your highway systems. You see the same language regarding I twenty-seven. This is both for designation, design, and funding. Maintain funding for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Partnership Programs. Your final bullet is new. That is directing COVID-nineteen-related financial assistance direct to municipalities regardless of population. Your city handles millions of dollars a year that are direct from the federal government. We take those through every um accountability program, your various audits, consolidated annual financial reports, and else, um, there's no reason we cannot do the same with COVID-nineteen-related funding. Mayor, that takes me through the end of the presentation. Any additional comments you may have?
Open the floor for for comments. I'm thankful for Mr. Atkinson for your work and counsel for all your input on this. Um, um, there are several of you've been very involved, particularly Ms. Joy, and um, so if there are no further comments, we will, what we'll see tonight will be a uh uh, when we get to item, uh, I believe it's item eight-three, we will see the uh updated version of this. I'll ask Mr. Atkinson tonight to go through those changes so we can make sure that they uh changes in addition, so they make sure they uh pass muster as to what we uh what we've what we uh have suggested. Okay? Okay, everybody all right with that? Okay, I'll see anybody. Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's move to the uh second item on work session. Uh, it's an update um from from uh our CFO regarding uh results of recent bond sales. Um, and uh as and then also a a quick uh um look back at at uh uh FY twenty FY nineteen-twenty sales tax collections for the City of Lubbock. Mr. Kostlich, good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, counsel. Good to be with you today to uh share some good uh financial results related to all of our recent bond uh refunding transactions and our FY twenty uh twenty sales tax. So let me uh go ahead and share my screen. All right, Mayor. All right. So starting first with our twenty-twenty bond refunding results, uh, if you recall, it was just about two weeks ago that we came to you with the parameters ordinance to go go forward with a a series of refundings for both the city uh on the city's credit and on our wasteful uh water wastewater credit. So back here today to to present the results of that. And uh, Mayor, just to let you know, we we hit a very good day in the market. Um, it was a day where uh equity started sliding, so there was a little bit of a a flight to to quality. So your your bonds are going to be very attractive on those days. Uh, so good, good results on this day. So first, starting with the twenty-twenty general obligation refunding series. Uh, this was a taxable advance refunding. Uh, as we presented to counsel, the the summary of what we expected is on the left. If you look on the right side of the screen, the actual results uh are are presented. So we did have uh thirty-two-point-six-nine million dollars of bonds uh that we pulled back and refunded. While we were expecting about a two percent interest on this, we actually came back uh because of the the interest in our bonds at a one-point-six-five uh percent all in all in true interest cost. So uh, that that led to some increased savings that you'll see at the bottom of the screen. Um, while we were expecting about one-point-eight, one-point-nine million, that actually came back eight-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars more at almost two-point-seven million. So that as a percentage, uh, of present value savings on those refunded bonds uh went from a five-point-seven expectation to an eight-point-two percent. Uh, so very, very good results on on that day. Now, we often get asked a question of who who is actually buying our bonds? Who's interested in these? And uh, so we we wanted to pull that out for you. And on a taxable series, uh, the the these are going to be equivalent to your to your treasuries out in the market. So uh, with a little bit higher yields than than what treasuries are providing, you're going to have a lot of interest from a lot of different investor groups. So on these accounts, you can see on the right, your insurance groups are always going to be the the bulk of of your bond buying. Uh, but you're going to have broker dealers, money managers, private wealth managers, uh property trading groups, bank portfolios, and you'll have a lot of municipal and government experi- uh investors interested in these bonds. So a- as far as individual companies and investment managers out there who are buying these bonds, you'll see on the left uh who all is placing orders on our bonds. These are the only the top ten. Uh, but New England Asset Management, Stiefel Nicholas, so on and so forth. So very, very good uh diversity in who is looking at our credit. Uh, it really speaks to to the creditworthiness of the City of Lubbock being at double-eight plus uh and being in the market. Our name is known, and uh investors really like what we what we provide. So a quick summary of the the twenty-twenty geo-refundings. We had eight-hundred-and-twenty-five or twenty-nine-point-five million dollars of orders and only, like I said, thirty-two-point-seven million available. So that was almost nine times oversubscribed. Uh, forty-seven investment accounts participated in this. That that means forty-seven different groups were placing orders uh for that total of almost eight-hundred-and-thirty million. That led to the two-point-seven-million-dollar net present value savings, uh, which equates to about two-hundred-and-seven-thousand per year. The all-intrance is cost of one-point-six-five percent. That's on thirteen-year basis. Uh, now, remember, uh, and I know Ms. Ms. Joy brings this up quite often. When we refund, we do not extend the terms of these bonds. So whatever we are refunding matures at the same time. Uh, so like I said, that that is a thirteen-year uh transaction. And at the present value savings of eight-point-two-three percent.
Mr. Kostlich, uh, go back if you would, please, sir. Those are awful good numbers. That that oversubscription percentage would be a lot higher than nine times. Um, maybe one of those numbers is not right. I know the thirty-two-point-seven is right, but that would be um nearly uh nearly thirty times, right? So in somewhere in that in that range, something like that, oversubscribed?
It would, Mayor. It really depends on uh the the way the oversubscriptions works based is based upon the series uh throughout the year. So um, if you're well oversubscribed in one, it doesn't necessarily uh mean you're oversubscribed in all.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
All right. So moving on to the water wastewater revenue credit, we had two series out that day. Uh, one was a tax-exempt current refunding, and the twenty-twenty C was a taxable advance refunding. So first, on the tax-exempt, uh, another good good day, twenty-two or twenty-seven-point-two million dollars of uh refunding bonds. Expected a one-point-three percent uh interest. We came back at a zero-point-eight-four percent interest. Uh, so very, very good results on that. That led to an increase in your PV savings of eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand over what was expected to a almost a two-point-six million. Brings your percentage of PV savings up from six-point-three to nine-point-five percent. Now, in your tax-exempt, you're going to have a little bit different uh array of of buyers on these. Some of these will be the same names, but they're looking at it for different purposes. You know, really, when you're looking at tax-exempt bonds in the market, uh, you're you're looking at uh portfolios like a lot of retirement uh portfolios, uh, bond funds out there that separately manage it accounts that are looking for uh the the tax-exempt credits. They need they need some money that that is the the tax-free money. So uh, that's who's going to really be in the in the market for these bonds. So you're going to see your Envases, your Goldman Sachs, Nuveen, uh, your Black Rocks. Some of those larger names are going to be ordering a lot of these uh for for their clients, private wealth management, the the high net worth individuals, and some of the the index funds that you'll see out there. So overall, two-hundred-and-forty-three million dollars in orders on twenty-seven-point-two million. So that's uh again, eight-point-nine times oversubscribed on these as well. Uh, thirty different accounts participated uh for a a savings, total savings of two-point-six million. So that's two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars per year on this series alone. Uh, all interest, all-in true interest cost of zero-point-eight-four percent on nine years. So uh, excellent result there with the present value savings of nine-point-five-one percent. Moving to the taxable series, uh, again, very similar results on the true interest cost out there. The the bump that we saw from that was uh from a two-point-one percent interest expected down to a one-point-seven-nine percent. Uh, great results, five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars uh increase in our net PV savings from expected to what we actually came in. What actually came in was almost one-point-five million dollars on this. Moves your percent PV savings up from four-point-four uh to six-point-six, almost six-point-seven percent. So uh, good results on that. A- and this taxable is going to be the same uh as your uh the same makeup, the same breakdowns, same buyers a- as what's on the general obligation side. Uh, it really is just a a matter of preference at that point, whether the the buyer is a a revenue-backed credit or a tax-backed credit. So uh, that that's just the only the the only difference in in what they're looking for. Uh, but this is again going to be your insurance, your money managers, uh, your broker dealers separately managed accounts. Uh, and you will see one one new name in here, Chicago Metropolitan Water Authority. That was really our big municipal in order of seven million dollars on on this deal. So a hundred-and-forty-five million dollars of orders on on twenty-two-point-one uh million available, so six-point-six times oversubscribed. So 145 million dollars of orders on on 22.1 million available. So 6.6 times oversubscribed. Thirty one investment accounts were were active in this transaction for a total PV savings of 1.5 million or 123,000 per year. The true interest cost at one just shy of 1.8% over 12 years and a PV savings of 6.65%. Now, Mayor and Council, there was one more refunding that was outside of us, but also happened within the last month. And that was the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority Revenue Bond refunding their series 2020, which was another tax exempt refunding. So this was presented, probably, it was presented back in July. But the transaction didn't actually occur until October. That was a parameters ordinance that that you all authorized as part of Cremois for for their staff to go forward with. So they actually executed this in October. So what was presented to to counsel, the Lubbock portion was about 16.5 million of their total 51.8 million dollar transaction. The the true interest cost that was anticipated was about 1.43%. It actually came in at 1.3. So a a good little savings of 12 basis points there, which increased the net PV savings from 3.3 million up to about 3.58, 3.6 million. So very good percent of PV savings, an increase of 1.6% up to 18.45. So on the water, the there were three series of refundings on the water side. And that really, that that relates to a total water wastewater net present value savings of 7.6 million dollars between the water wastewater and the city credit. We have effectively refinanced our bonds to save 10.3 million dollars in these in these four transactions. So very, very good results. And Mayor, I'm going to stop there before I get into sales tax and ask if there are any questions.
On the Cremois, what's the age of those bonds?
Those were 20 year bonds. And that was a current refunding. So they had 10 years left. And they still have 10 years left.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other questions? Okay, Mr. Mr. Kostlich, just just look at the sales tax number.
Some more good news on the on the year end sales tax, despite the 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 year that we had the COVID pandemic. In the the chart that you're going to see, the the bar graphs are are your monthly results, the red being the fiscal year 2019, the previous year, the blue bar is the fiscal year 20. The lines are the cumulative. So blue is again fiscal year 20, red is fiscal year 19. So we ended the year just shy of 74 million dollars as opposed to last year's 71.6 million dollars. So that was a 2.3 million dollar increase in sales tax this year, which is a 3.3% year over year growth. You know, if you really look at the the bar charts and month to month, what you're going to see is Q1, October to December, we we came out of the gate very, very strong. Sales tax was up about 9.3% in in our first quarter fiscal year. January and February, again, were were slightly better than than the previous year, but not to the same extent. And then March and April is where we had the stay at home orders that that came on, which we knew would hurt our our sales tax dollars. To the extent that that they did, we were anticipating a lot more. So we we did see in March a drop of 390,000 year over year, and then in April, 650,000 year over year. So quite a bit of of room given back during those two months. But then May, as we started started reopening and loosening the the stay at home orders, we started seeing sales tax jump back up a little bit. But then in in June, we saw a $680,000 year over year increase. So very, very strong performance. Feel like that is a lot of pent up demand, people coming in, shopping a lot of our stores resulted in that that large jump to to offset some of what we lost back in March and April. I say pent up demand because July and August and then September kind of start following the same trend of of gradual increases year over year. But overall, very, very good results despite the 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 loss that we saw during the two months of the the stay at home orders.
Okay. I think, Mr. Kostlich, you could bring news like that every every meeting 24 times a year. We we could schedule you 15 minutes, okay?
Sounds good, Mayor. Sounds good.
Any questions for Blue? You know, I just, I I think back to Ms. Joy, Mr. Griffith, you'll particularly appreciate this. But I think back to a time nearly five years ago when we didn't have a CFO and and I I just, I'm I'm thankful for the 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 approach that Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Kostlich and their team take to the finance aspect of of our of our business. And whether it's managing our deposits or managing, you know, we're making sure that our we're managing our portfolio, our debt portfolio, or just reporting out something like this, which is easy for us to understand, and I think easy for citizens to understand. I'm very thankful. Looks like, Ms. Joy, you have a comment.
Amen. That's it. Amen.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, I would second that amen. Ms. Joy just said, Blue, thank you. And Jared, thank you all very much. And we do appreciate it. This, this is great news considering what we've been through.
Okay, Council, that that takes care of our our items for work session. I don't believe we've had any pulls. Although with this doing this remotely, I want to make certain that that we didn't miss something and that there's not something that that one of you would like to have pulled off the consent agenda. Mr. Atkinson, you're good, right? Nothing from staff?
That that is correct.
Okay. All right. No pulls then, Council. Any any questions about items that are on the regular agenda? I guess there's only three. We've talked about one in depth. We'll be up, we're posted to talk about, I think, a second one in in executive session. So okay, I don't see any of those. All right. So it is 3:49. Lubbock City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose with consulting of consulting with city staff regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Also to discuss personnel matters under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. And finally, to discuss commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. It is 3:50. Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Council, I would remind you to leave this meeting. Enjoy. As soon as they join us, we will. There's Mr. Griffith. And I know that our pastor is traveling. And so we're hoping that we can catch Matt while he is, we'll catch Matt here in just a minute while he's still in range. Good afternoon. Pastor Wolfington, how are you?
Great. How about all of you today?
We're doing great. Bear with us for one, just one moment. We'll we'll get started. We're waiting on we're waiting on one member. We're going to go ahead and return to our meeting. It's 4:58 and we're Lubbock City Council has has returned from executive session. We're going to do our our open with our invocation, followed by the pledges of allegiance. And then after that, we'll gavel in for our our regular meeting. I welcome you all to 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 our to our meeting. And I'm thankful that we have Pastor Matt Wolfington with St. Luke's United Methodist Church. And Matt's going to lead us in a word of prayer. Following his prayer, the mayor pro, excuse me. Yes, the mayor pro tem, I'm just looking at the wrong mayor pro tem. Mr. Massengill will lead us in the pledges to the American and and Texas flag. So I'd like to to ask Pastor Wolfington to lead us in a word of prayer. Matt? Matt, can you hear us? We're not, we cannot hear you. Okay, well, let's wait on, let's wait on the the invocation for a moment and see if if we have any like connecting with Mr. Wolfington after the pledges. Mr. Massengill, would you lead us in the in the in the pledges, please, sir?
Sure, if you're able to stand. Join me in the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the flag, United States to the Republic
To the Republic.
One nation
One nation.
Under God
Under God.
Now, the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state.
Under God. And indivisible.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let's, it looks like we may have lost Mr. Yearwood. Did we lose Mr. Wolfington?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay, well, he, our starting late put him in a problem, and he told us that it would. So Council, if you just maybe he's coming back here. Hold a sec. Looks like we see, I see him coming back here. Matt, can you hear us? Pastor, can you hear us? Okay. Pastor, please accept my apologies for our meeting starting late. We'll we we're thankful for your willingness to open our prayer, our meeting with a word of prayer. We'll reschedule you very soon. We 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 wish you and and your family and your parishioners a very Merry Christmas. Council, are there any volunteers to open us with a word of prayer?
Mayor, I will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. I appreciate it.
You bow your heads, please. Your heavenly Father, thank you so much for life. Thank you so much for this city. Please help us as we go through these tough times in this pandemic. Please let us remember our first responders, our healthcare workers. Please help us remember the families that have lost loved ones. Dear Lord, help us to do the right things for our city. Most of all, give us hope. Give us compassion. Give us patience. Thank you for everything we have. Thank you so much. In his name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you again, Mr. Massengill. It's 5:03. I want to, I'll I'll call the Lubbock City Council at order in our regular December meeting. Today is Tuesday, the first of December. Just as a reminder, we in December, we as in November, we move our meetings from the second and fourth week of the month to the first and third meeting. So our first and third week of the month happens to be that the first Tuesday falls on the first of December. So this month, we will meet on the first and the 15th. And so we thank you for joining us today in a all virtual video conference council. All seven council members are in attendance. As well, we're joined by our senior staff. And we will get along with the business of the city. Our first item is item five on our agenda, citizen comments. A little bit different process, and I'll 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 read this, go through this just to remind people, since we'll be doing this again on the 15th and likely for for the foreseeable future. A citizen wishing to address the council regarding any regarding any matter posted on the council agenda below today's agenda or the agenda on the 15th may submit a comment by email at citizencomments@mylubbock.us no later than 2:00 PM on the date of the meeting today. Certainly would have been 2:00 PM today. Submitted comments must include name and address. Each comment will be read aloud for a period of time and not to exceed three minutes, which is consistent with our city council rules. Citizen comments are an opportunity or is an opportunity for citizens to make comments and express positions on an agenda item. So remember that a a comment that is made, that is asking a question or is weighing in on something that's not on our agenda will be handled another way by city staff will be will be followed up in that regard. But we'll make sure that citizen comments via email are just like ones that we accept live rules. Really, the rules stay the same, but instead of being live, we ask you to email your comments in by by 2:00 o'clock on the day of the meeting. Okay? Council will move to item six. The minutes are this item. They begin on page 103. The minutes from the September 23rd 2020 special city council meeting at the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance meeting, the October 20 2020 special city council meeting at the Electric Utility Board, and the November 2nd 2020 regular city council member. and the November 2nd, 2020 regular city council member, excuse me, meeting were all included with this week's agenda. To begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Counsel, are there additions or corrections to the minutes that are presented in the agenda package? Okay, hearing none. The, the motion, there's a motion on the floor to approve these minutes as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Ms. Garza, that passes seven to zero. The consent agenda is next tonight. It's item seven on the agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of items that are considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the city council desires to, to discuss an item, that item is pulled or removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Counsel, I don't believe we have any pulls tonight. I'll just confirm that one more time.
I have none.
Okay, I don't see any. So that being the case, Mr. Massengale, I see your mute is off. Can I get a motion from you to begin consideration of item seven?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Joy, thank you for that second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Counsel, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Are there, if there are any opposed, we'd like to hear from you by the same token. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll now move to item, to the regular agenda. It's number eight on tonight's order of worship. It begins with item 8-1 on page 392. Item 8-1 is an item from the Reese, Lubbock Reese Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors. They need a new member, they had a member resign and they've got an open position. I will open the floor for a, a motion to begin our consideration of this. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Tim Collins to the Lubbock Reese Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors.
Okay.
I'll start with that motion.
Motion by Mr. Griffith, a second by Mr. Massengale. Are there other appointments, any other, any other nominations, I guess I should say? Okay. So counsel, we've, in form of a motion, we have a motion to appoint Tim Collins to the Lubbock Reese Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors. There's a second to that motion. Is there further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to item 8-2. 8-2 is an item that comes to us from, from code enforcement. And before we begin discussion on this, I'll, I'll open the floor for a, a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Mr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steve O'Neill is going to walk us through this item. Mr. Yearwood, do you show Mr. O'Neill available?
Yes, sir, I just, I just promoted him. He should be good to go.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. O'Neill. Steve, I believe you're, you're muted at the moment.
Thank.
There we go.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councils. Good to see you all again. Yes, item 8-2 is an amendment to chapter 36, streets, sidewalks, and other public ways of code ordinances. And this is specifically article 36.01, which deals with maintenance of those right of ways. It's become necessary to amend the code in this regard because we've had some enforcement challenges with regard to items in the right of way, particularly as it relates to alleys. And we feel like that the amendment to this ordinance will, or to this code ordinances, I should say, in this regard will assist us in our enforcement activities and will also better inform our citizens of what is and is not allowed in the right of ways. So to just walk you through this real quick, section 36.01005 adds language that will now include alleys in addition to sidewalks and parkways and the requirements for abutting property owner maintenance. It also extends the responsibility to maintain to abutting tenants or less seized, not just property owners, where applicable. And you'll see that particular language changed throughout that particular article. Provides that shrubs and bushes, trees, and other plantings within the right of way of any street or alley shall not impede the passage of vehicular traffic and provides for a duty to trim overhanging tree branches and limbs to a minimum specified height that had not existed before. Section 36.01006 provides that special users, and special users is generally meant to be contractors performing work on adjacent properties, have a duty to ensure that alleys, sidewalks, parkways, curbs, driveways, et cetera, are kept safe and unobstructed and that they be restored to their original condition upon completion of work. An important note here is that this is separate and distinct from contractors that are permitted to work in the right of way and follow that particular permitting process under article 36 of the code of ordinances. That's an entirely separate process and they are highly regulated by the Public Works Department. Section 36.01009 sets, sets forth examples of specific items which may not obstruct the alley or right of way, except as may be otherwise authorized by a right of way construction permit or a street or alley use license. So a lack of specificity there has been kind of a problem for our homeowners and, you know, other adjacent property owners. So we, we provided some specific examples there. Section 360110 provides that violation of the ordinance is deemed a public nuisance, subject to abatement by the city and recovery of expenses, similar to what we would have, you know, on, on private property. But it also reserves the right to the city to immediately remove any violation in the right of way at our sole cost and expense. We really have that right anyway, but we want to spell it out in the ordinance so that the public is on notice. That is really the sum and substance of the ordinance, folks. Be happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. Atkins, do you want to add anything to that before we go to council?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. O'Neill, City Attorney's Office, several others have worked through this. I think the changes are necessary and certainly urge your support.
So my understanding of this is we largely need this in alleys where we have underground utilities. Is that, Mr. O'Neill, is that, is that where we see most of the problems?
Well, sir, it's primarily in the alleys where we are seeing the problems. We do have property owners that will maintain certain items in the alley such as firewood racks. We'll see contractors installing irrigation system components in the alleys where they should be on the, on the private property side of that property line. Also, we've, we've seen such strange examples as pool and spa equipment installed in the alley right of way. We've seen bollards or guard posts installed out there to protect the things they illegally put out in the right of way. All of these things are hindrance to our solid waste vehicles. And so it's, it's become something that we've kind of seen evolve over time and get a little worse. And of course, we've always had the vegetation problem and not really had a, a solid standard, you know, for anyone to follow there.
So what's the, what's the, if somebody said, okay, now, remind me, I know that we, as a homeowner, I own to the middle of that alley, but, but I'm, there's, I've also, there's a right of way that I've, you know, given to the city. What, what is, what's that, what's that width in the alley?
Well, sir, it's, it's actually not that way. Kind of the way you described it, there would be more of an easement situation.
Okay, excuse me, wrong, wrong word. Right, okay.
Yes, sir, the property owner actually only owns up to the rear of their property line there, which then begins the right of way of the alley, which is typically 20 feet wide.
Okay.
And, and we, if we have a paved alley, that's typically a 10-foot pavement section centered in that 20-foot right of way. You know, so, you know, all of our utility assignments typically go in, you know, one side or the other. And in the case of sewer, for example, it may go down the middle of that way. This is less of an issue for trying to protect utilities than it is one of trying to maintain appropriate clearance for solid waste vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
This is Ms. Patterson Harris.
Does it apply to areas where there happens to be a lot of, what do you call it, overhang from trees over roadways?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
So what is our, what is our stance on that if, how do we handle that? Because I'm thinking of a particular area.
Well, what this would do is it set forth some specific requirements for overhanging tree limbs and branches. It would require that they be trimmed up to a height of 12 feet above a vehicular pathway and eight feet above a pedestrian pathway. And we already do have language in another section of the Lubbock Code that prevents, in general, tree branches and limbs from obstructing traffic or obscuring a traffic signal device. This just provides some standards that are enforceable and, you know, a little easier to follow if you're a homeowner.
So now that they're in place, when we have these issues, we can basically address them with a little bit more punch?
We can, as a matter of fact. It, it would be easier to issue a citation that would be held up in court, for example, if it were challenged. And it would also provide us with, and this is important, with abatement capabilities. If we had to go in and do the work ourselves, we could assess the cost against the abutting property.
Have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Christian?
Steve, I'm going to assume that most property lines are probably the fence line as well. Is that pretty close to being accurate on most alleys? I'm talking alleys right now.
Generally, yes.
So we have some of these people that are putting pool equipment on the backside of that fences?
We have seen it, yes.
Is that in other things that you're talking about, but in particularly in the pool equipment? Where are they getting the notion that they can do that? I mean, obviously, they're probably having a pool contractor that should know better than that. So my, I'm gonna, let me, I'll ask that question, but then also, what are we going to do to let contractors and other people know that this ordinance, if it passes, if we agree to it, goes into effect? And so we won't be going back to somebody that does, that does this and puts out, put it outside their, the pool equipment outside their fence? So, so we avoid bigger problems that we already, than, than we already have and?
Well, sir, and let me point out to all of you, the, the pool equipment example I gave you is an extreme example that we've not seen much of. You know, in my, I guess nearly 19 years here, I may have seen that two or three times. What is more prevalent by far is irrigation system equipment and also what's very prevalent is water filtration equipment. You know, that is something that some companies do as standard practice. It's coming back in and putting water filtration and water treatment system equipment in the right of way, you know, which is a prohibited activity. So what we would need to do is identify, you know, the primary culprits there, for lack of a better term, and notify them of, of the new standards and new requirements. That's the best we can.
Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, sir.
Just a little point of clarification. On easements, basically touching on what Ms. Patterson Harris touched on. On the street corner, there's a stop sign, there's a tree somehow got planted on the easement. It is impeding the vision or the, the visual of that stop sign. No, that, that's on the property owner, correct?
It is, it is. We've got actually now in place this provision, if it, if it passes, that would, that would provide some specific requirements that have to be met. But in another section of the code of ordinances, and I don't have that committed to memory right now, there is also a, a, a more general requirement that traffic signs and traffic signals may not be obscured by vegetation.
Okay, so the, the, the city goes in there, they do the abatement. The, the cost of that abatement now goes to the property owner, if I understood that properly.
That is correct.
Okay, now, let's suppose that you're, the, the, the crew is going out there to do some abatement. Does the property owner get a, a, I think you said it, they, they get a stop or notice that this is fixing to happen? They, they do have time to do the remediation?
Oh, yes, sir.
Before the city steps in?
Yes, sir, it would be, basically, this, this ordinance points to our normal abatement process, which, which by law requires that there be a notice given first. You know, that you've got a certain amount of time to correct this violation or the city will move in and abate it and assess a limb on your property. That's typically seven to 10 days, you know, time that they, they have to correct the violation.
Thank you, sir. That answers my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Further question, Ms. Joy, it looks like you're unmuted. Do you have a question?
Oh, sorry. Even though they have seven to 10 days, if they run into an issue, can't find a contractor to trim trees, whatever, they need to communicate with codes, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, very much so. And, and codes will work with them in, in unique circumstances.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other questions for comments for, for Mr. O'Neill? Okay, thank you, Steve. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counsel, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to make these changes. Is there further discussion? Okay. I, all those in favor of this, the ordinance to approve the, this change to article 36 of our code on first reading, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same side? Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Counsel, our, our final item tonight is, is item 8-3. It's on page 402. This is our legislative agenda. So let's, instead of getting a motion to begin discussion on this, since, since we're going to see a, an updated document here, Mr. Atkins, and you want to, you want to, how do you want to handle this? I know you had a chance to email it. Do you want to share that? You want to share your screen? What do you, how do you want to go about this?
I think I will try to share the screen, Mayor. I've highlighted those items that have changed as a result of discussion.
Okay, why don't you do that? Counsel, you, you all okay with that, with him doing it that way? Okay, let's do that, Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Yearwood, you're going to have to unlock me so I can share screen.
You, you should be unlocked. Hang on. Jared, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, it's telling me only host can share.
All right, hang on. Okay, try now.
I got it. Thank you, sir. I got it. Thank you, sir.
Yay, Jared.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, can everybody hear and do you see the document on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So if you would, Counsel, I'm, I'm on page two. This is the first item that we discussed. City will support. Come down to the highlighted text. This is following rules proposed by the Texas Controller of Public Accounts to appropriately distribute online sales tax revenue to point of destination. The additional text now says efforts, so this would be support efforts, to remove minimum sales thresholds through the online marketplaces to establish equity between online and traditional retailers.
Jared, let's pause right there for a minute. Ms. Joy, I think that was your, you were the one that was, talked about that. How, how do you think that sounds to you? Did we lose Ms. Joy? Mark, can you see, Mr. Yearwood, can you see Ms. Joy on, on the, on Zoom?
No, sir, I, I don't.
Looks like it's lost her.
Okay, Jared, why don't you continue? Why don't you continue? I'm sure she'll get back in. Let's continue. We'll come, we'll loop back, okay?
Okay, so we're at the end now. We're on page three. This is the end of the support section. Again, we'll talk on the yellow highlighting. Expansion of broadband availability throughout Texas and provision of necessary state and federal funding for such expansion. So this is related to the discussion we had. Expansion of the broadband network in the state is a good, good and great idea. Putting such costs, though, on local government is not. I'll pause, Mayor.
That, yeah, looks, looks good to me. Why don't you go and catch the last one, and then we'll open it up at that point to comments, and maybe we'll have Ms. Joy back by then.
Okay, so the final, this is an added bullet. We have it in the support section at the moment. So we would support police reform initiatives that are subject to local approval by duly elected governing bodies. And I, I do think one of the concerns, there are some police reform initiatives that would carry potentially pretty large costs that would be pushed down to your local budget.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm back. I have been tracking some of the bills that have been filed on police reform.
Yes, ma'am.
And they go all over the issues, and some of them are very draconian.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's why I think we need, I mean, we didn't, we understand that, that some, maybe some reform, that every city is different. And in my experience with visiting with cities across the state, is they all have their methods, and a lot of them, and it works for them. And I think to, to come up with one bill that says you got to do A, B, C, D, E, F, and G just doesn't fit, and it's another issue for local control. So I like this wording.
Ms. Joy, did you have a chance to catch the wording on the other two changes?
Yes, and, and they're good.
Is that okay with that language? Okay, let's, I'm going to just go around the horn real quick. Mr. Massengill, are you okay?
I'm good.
Ms. Patterson Harris, Mr. Chides, you guys okay? Got a thumbs up? Good, okay.
I'm good.
Mr. Christian?
Only thing I would say, that Jared added support efforts in the, on the previous page. That might be something that you'd want to add to it. It sounded better, I think, support efforts to remove. That's the only thing I'd have.
Yeah, I think you're, but we're supposed to read all of those sentences to say the city will support and then efforts, you know, you know, like, so they're all styled that way. I, I, I agree with you, Randy.
Yeah, but this, that, what he added is kind of a subdivision of the one just above it.
Right. It could, it could even stand on its own if you chose to do it that way.
Yeah, I just think as you're going down, there's just, just that one word to just add some clarity to it would be my suggestion.
If, if approved, I think I will move that back over, and it'll be a standalone bullet that matches the remainder.
Okay. Mr. Griffith?
When, on the very first change, equity between online and traditional retailers, should that not read brick and mortar? Or traditional? I don't know.
I don't, I don't think so. It's not brick and mortar because there are other retailers. I'm not sure what you're trying to say, Jeff. Why brick and mortar?
Because that denotes the difference between online. Traditional could mean, traditional could mean you're brick and mortar with online presence.
But if you're that. How about local? How about local retailers?
Some, some of your marketplace sellers may be local.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I think the legislation would get at both Mr. Griffith and Ms. Joy's concerns. I think this largely lays out what we will support. And I, I, I think the comptroller, based upon a discussion we had with him at lunch a couple of weeks ago, is, I, I think initially, he didn't think this was a great idea, and I think he feels like now it may be worth going down this road. So we'll see what they do. Yeah, I know he didn't make the decision, but he's the one that's got to implement it.
Aye.
Okay, other comments on, on, on the legislative agenda? Okay, so we've got a, a, I'll open the floor for a motion now. I think we've had some discussion on the changes that we suggested during work session. Ms. Joy, can I, can I get a motion from you on this, please?
Move to approve the legislative agenda as presented during the December 1st, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Say, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Okay, further discussion on the 2021 Legislative Agenda? Okay. Seeing none, Counsel, all those in favor of the motion to approve item eight-three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Garza, I believe that completes our business. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Mr. Satterwhite, are you good with everything?
Yes, sir.
Thumbs up there. Okay, just a, a couple of, of quick reminders, Counsel. We'll meet two weeks from today on the 15th. We will have a press conference tomorrow midday, 11:30, as we continue to update the community on our response to COVID-19. And we'll be joined tomorrow by County Judge Curtis Parish and representatives from UMC and Covenant Health, UMC Health System, Covenant Health System. So just as a teaser for that. Otherwise, if there's no other business for the Lubbock City Council, it's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. It's 5:36, and we are adjourned.